Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, May 11th, 2023 Commission Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markburg.
Here.
Commissioner Madari.
Here.
Commissioner Correll.
Here.
And if you'll all rise for the invocation, please. Father God, we come before you today and ask you that you'll cover us with your blessings during this meeting and that we can serve our county. I'd also like to thank all of our law enforcement. It's Law Enforcement Month, the whole month of May. We need to thank them every day, not just in the month of May. I'd also like to pray for our Border Patrol. I know they're being overrun today. I pray that you'll bless them, cover them with your shield, keep them safe. Pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of New Mexico, with the invisible of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Okay, did you want to pull anything? Are you still okay on that? I think that's on the new, isn't it?
The one on the P.
Oh, okay. Do you want to pull it?
If you want to pull that, she can explain that to you.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to our Sheriff's Office report.
Good morning, Commissioners David Lacko, Otero County Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the SO in April, we responded to 2,837 calls for service. Generated 241 investigative reports, issued 163 traffic citations, conducted 56 traffic crash investigations, resulted in 79 arrests for the month, and we had four summons or non-traffic citations that were issued. In our Narcotics Division, we did three search warrants, had one arrest, two agency assists. They generated 32 case reports. We had four checkpoint cases down at the Border Patrol checkpoints, seized $12,000 in cash. That says 21, but that's not. One firearm seized. We had three jail possession cases. Seized 78.8 grams of meth, 22.5 grams of marijuana, 2,893 prescription pills that were in the possession of somebody who did not have a prescription for those pills, 417.5 grams of cocaine, and we had 1,106 fentanyl pills seized. Had a total of $157,933 worth of illegal narcotics seized. And I will tell you, with our Narcotics Division, it's just, it's crazy right now. I've actually added another body to that, so hopefully that'll help us with a little more. We're just, they're very busy. There's a lot going on with them right now. They need a little help. For April, our special events, we attended three career days, two in Chaparral, one in Cloudcroft. Also attended was a guest speaker at our first-ever hosted two-week DARE instructor class. We had 18 members of law enforcement from all over New Mexico and Colorado graduated the class. We hosted it, but it was put on at the college campus in Redozo. And hopefully, these 18 will now be able to present their teachings and their learnings and stuff to their fifth graders in their respective communities. And I'll tell you, today, as soon as we get done here, I'll go to Alameda Park. We got about 350 DARE graduates, fifth-grade students that'll be having a picnic over there today. We've got them from Chaparral, all across the basin, Muscalero, quite a number of kids that we'll go hang out with here in a little bit. Training for us right now, we're getting close. We're in our second year of a two-year training cycle. Right now, kind of due to some budget constraints, we're not sending anybody to training, but there is a bunch of training that we are doing online. So they'll keep doing that till the new budget takes effect. Did have one deputy put in his notice to retire, and that would be effective June 30th. I have two deputies that have been kind of following their progress along in the academy. On the 25th, I'll go to Santa Fe for their graduation, get their certification, and we'll bring them back, and then the real work starts for them then, so. I have two additional new recruits that have just started the pre-academy training. They will be, we're preparing them for the academy that starts in July. Right now, I have three openings, but I do have three people that are in the background phase right now, two laterals, one uncertified. Hopefully, by the middle of next month, I'll have the two laterals in place, and the other will try to get them ready for the other academy, another position in the academy in July. So hopefully, by the middle of next month, we'll be full up again. On our vehicles, we have the new Tahus and stuff. We're just in the process. I know there's two in the shop right now getting started on, so we'll just keep moving along with those. The six trucks that we got, those are already assigned. Those are on the street, being used. We'll just wait for progress on the new Tahoe, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions that you have.
I know you went down and got to ride in the boat down on the border right after our meeting last month. Do you have anything to report on that?
Yeah, I forgot to put that on here. Yeah, we did. We went down and we attended a Southwest Border Sheriff's Coalition meeting in McAllen, Texas. During that meeting, we had the opportunity to meet with numerous Border Patrol Sector Chiefs, the Chief of Border Patrol, he was there. We got to pick some brains and stuff, just to kind of see what they're encountering in different areas. I've been to Arizona a couple of times. I wanted to go to Texas and kind of see what's going on down there. Two different, totally different extremes, you know, what they're seeing over here versus what they're seeing in Texas, and it's even different from what we're seeing right down here at the El Paso Sector. That was, it was very eye-opening, just to see what they're encountering down there. And we did get to spend four hours on the DPS patrol boat. We helped them, just got on and patrolled the Rio Grande River with them for four hours, and it was interesting to see the people on the Mexico side. I mean, they're blowing up rafts, blowing up inner tubes and stuff. Just, it was a matter of time, they were going to cross that river, so we kind of threw a kink in their plans, because they normally have two boats running. At that time, we had 10 boats running, so kind of spoiled some of their plans a little bit. But that was a, it was a very interesting trip, very, it was quite an experience, very educational experience, just to see what they're up against down there, so.
Do you have any news with Title 42?
Well, I've had three Zoom meetings the day before yesterday. We had four yesterday. I keep asking for, okay, what's the plan? What are we looking at? And I can't get a definitive answer from anybody. Yesterday, at 3:30, we had another Zoom meeting with Border Patrol. They have put together a communications center in which they're going to start putting out daily briefs. We signed up for that yesterday, so hopefully, we'll start getting daily briefs on what's going on, and they're going to break it down, you know, by Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, in different regions, and they'll start putting out information as to what they're encountering. I know there's been some threats, see what happens as far as riots at two of the port of entries in El Paso. And then there's just, I don't know, if you've seen it on the news, there's camps on the other side of the border just waiting for Title 42 to end. I think there's been a lot of disinformation shared with those people trying to get in, because Title 8 is different than Title 42. Title 42 is going away, but Title 8 is actually going to be much more restrictive, and there are some consequences to it. I think a lot of people that think they're just going to walk across the border, it's not going to happen. There's going to be certain criteria that they're going to have to meet to be let in. So I think the, there may be some, with the misinformation, there may be some angry people that they're going to have to deal with, so. But hopefully, this information that we'll be getting every day, these briefs and stuff, will keep us informed on what's going on. And yesterday, while we were talking about these briefs, they were demonstrating it to us, they got an alert. Apparently, there was some kind of a shots fired incident at one of the port of entries in Texas. We haven't got the actual brief on that just yet, but hopefully, that's supposed to start today, so hopefully, we'll start getting those briefs, and I'd be more than happy to share it with anybody that needs to see it.
Do you have any indication that they might be headed our way, to be like dropping them off here?
Nothing yet. I know there's a lot of talk as far as the Dona Anna side. There's more resources and stuff over there. I really think the majority of them are going to go that route because of the other resources. Plus, I think it's going to be, if they get in, it's going to be easier for them to try to get up the I-25 corridor. So it's hard to say, but we're preparing for, you know, a lot of people. We've got extra patrols down on the Mesa, we've got, you know, our Stone Garden patrols. If Border Patrol here starts, you know, they have to start pulling people to work the border itself, we'll start running extra interdiction on Highway 54, Highway 70, just to, just try to help them out. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see.
There is a car that was a result of an arrest.
A white van.
A white van. It's located on the easement. That is on the easement, and it's being vandalized. Do you think we can get that moved?
It's not in an area where I can actually move it.
Can you tell me if that is the electric easement?
I do not know. I, I've had numerous deputies go up and check on it. We've had lots of calls. We have contacted the owner of that vehicle, like, three different times now, advised them that your vehicle is still here. People are starting to vandalize it. You need to move your vehicle, and as of now, they have not made an effort to do that.
It's just another junk pile in the midst of the county?
Totally understand that. Now, if the rear end of it was sticking out of the roadway just a little bit, we could tow it, but.
All those vandals might move it.
I understand that. Yeah, we're aware of it, we'll keep dealing with it, trying to get it taken care of.
You have anything?
The only thing I have, David, is been getting some complaints again in Bolzakers. They're on First Street. They got another vehicle out front that is partially on the asphalt, and you can tell they're working on it, so.
On First Street?
Yes, they're in Bolzakers, where the other vehicle was abandoned out there.
Where the truck was at before?
Yes. But other than that, that's about it.
And the last time we talked about that, we had people watching in, and it was done before the meeting was over, so hopefully, if I get some people listening in right now, we'll get a deputy down there on First Street and check out that vehicle. If it's in the roadway, we'll give them an opportunity to move it. If they don't, we'll move it forward, so.
Definitely on the easement, maybe it is sticking out a little bit onto the chips.
We will address that. Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners Matt Clark, Emergency Services Director.
Good morning.
To enforcement, we opened up 60 new cases, solid waste, burns, weeds, closed up 25 of those cases, did two fire investigations and six fire inspections, and completed 92 follow-ups. Rose Street is in the courts. The street itself is looking a lot better. Property still needs work. Mystic is also in the courts. 15 First Street, like you just talked with Sheriff Black on, I don't know about the vehicle, but the property itself is continually to make improvements, so we're still monitoring that one. The 22nd of April, we did a recruiting event for the volunteers at the White Sands Mall, and we had some good contacts, and hopefully, we get a couple people out of that one. May 19th and 20th, we'll be out at Sounds of Freedom, trying to do some recruiting there and also providing some first aid for that event. And the volunteers responded to 149 calls for the month of April, 18 fires, and 112 EMS calls. Slash pit is open, and we've got about 60 loads so far. Forest is going into high fire danger, effective today, so we'll be continually monitoring that. Would that stand for any questions?
Yes, the one in Bolzakers should get in on First Street. They tore a house down, or a building, and the insulation is laying, a lot of the insulation is just laying on top of the weeds, and you can see where it's blowing all around. You might get Jacob just to look at that. The rest of it is, every time I go by, some days are cleaning it up, other days are in a pile, so I don't know if it's work in progress, or with the insulation with these winds, we've been having, it'll be all over Bolzakers worth over with.
I'll have them follow up on that today.
Sun Valley Road? At the end of that, do we have where they were?
That's in the courts, that's Mystic Road.
And is that including what he's currently doing in the courts?
It's all been turned over to RB and to Jay for further, so I don't know if that's all been included.
No, we're still working on formulating charges. What he's currently doing, potentially, he's demoing that gas station out at Muscalero, and there's a possibility the soil's contaminated. There's also a possibility that it's not. State doesn't have, unfortunately, like, concrete procedures in how something like that needs to be handled or permitted, and the enforcement agency also gives the explanation that they have a small staff and struggle to cover the entire state. For, to determine if that soil's contaminated or not requires testing. When I spoke to the head of enforcement last week, she claimed that the investigator from Dona Anna County had gotten samples and was getting it tested, but I don't know how accurate that is. She was going to follow up with him, and I need to follow up with her. As far as us conducting the testing, we don't necessarily have the resources in place. One, it would, we would have to get a warrant to go collect a sample, and if we were able to get that and secure it, then we would need to determine where to get it tested and how to pay for the testing, and we haven't gone down that road yet. The other stuff that he's doing, it falls in frustratingly gray area between what our ordinance says and what state statute says, and so we're trying to figure out how we can charge him and what we can charge him. He's arguably operating a dump site without a permit, but that kind of falls under the purview of the state, and it's one of those things where the law says you need a permit, but it doesn't explicitly say the consequences for not having a permit, or who enforces that, or what the mechanisms are. And they view clean fill as certain construction debris, and that it's okay to bury those. In our ordinance, it also says that, but when it's on your own property or a construction site, it's okay to bury it on that construction site. What he's doing is taking it from demolition sites to his dump site and circumventing, paying the, I assume it's to circumvent paying the fees to the construction dump, but we do, we got records from the construction dump, and he is taking some things there and paying for some things, so I guess we should be thankful for that. But it's just a frustrating situation. I understand that the Van Winkle's and the other neighbors, why they're frustrated, and you know, it would make anyone mad that if someone came and bought land next to you and started using it as a landfill. And so we're going to continue to work on what we can to find something prosecutable that'll stick on him. The other downside to that is it's, our fees, the fines are $300 per offense, so we really need to rack up the offenses for it to be anything meaningful, whereas if he were to be found dumping hazardous waste or something like that, that's when the fines become consequential and a true deterrent. So hopefully, you know, as far as deterrence, the soil samples come back positive and the EPA does something, but in alternative, while we're doing what we can do, the neighbors also have the option to sue him themselves in court. I don't know. I know that people don't like hearing that, and they want the county to take care of it, but sometimes, to get the fastest and most meaningful results, you gotta do it yourself sometimes, so. But we're working on it, we're not gaffing it off, we take it serious, and we're building up a big case file, and once we, hopefully, you know, in the next week or so, we determine the best course of action for filing something.
So would the EPA be involved if there was contamination? Is that the only way they would be involved?
Yes, if there was some type of hazardous material.
They would have to prove that first.
Yeah, we have to have some evidence of that, and we're trying to get them to come out and determine, and we have suspicion, because, one, it's the gas station, and it's not the first gas station, and then another one of the project sites most likely contains asbestos, but getting them to be responsive, I also have previously filed a complaint with the federal EPA. You'd think they would be concerned and take it serious, but, you know, I guess in Otero County, in the boonies, who cares? Still, yeah, it's not a million-dollar corporation to go after, so. But we're looking at every avenue we can to take some type of action.
I contract with an environmental company out of El Paso to analyze my water, my dirt, and they come to me every quarter, and I pay an annual fee for them to monitor that. They would probably be able to test the dirt if this something becomes where we can do a warrant on it, probably inexpensive.
Okay.
I mean, like, inexpensive, I'm thinking under $1,500.
Okay.
So if we can get to that point, then we do have resources.
Okay, I'll get that info from you, and I'll get with the sheriff and analyze whether, what our options are for a warrant. It may be there, so if we can make it work and they're on board, then we'll go that route.
RB, if it, illegal dump site hadn't been permitted or licensed for that, the state should have the right to, you know, X amount of days to have it cleaned up and removed?
They should. You go to the Solid Waste Bureau's website, and it references all these great initiatives and policies that they're going to have, but there's not much in place, so. We'll keep putting pressure on them and being a squeaky wheel and trying to get some attention from them.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department. So for the month of April, we've started our patching in Dog Canyon area and that subdivision for Chip Seal this year. We finished our scaling over in Fresno Canyon, got it cleaned up, and the roads opened back up, you know, came out very well. We've done mowing throughout the county, haul pit run and rock up onto Waterfall West and Upper Penney Asco, did some more blade patching in Angelina. Sign maintenance, no snow this last month, thank God, and cracked seal the Sacramento River Road.
I'm glad you got Fresno back open.
Yeah.
Do you know what white van I'm talking about? When you leave from your house, do you go to Lolly's Gate, or do you go out?
I go out to the gate.
Oh, okay.
I haven't been out that way.
Okay. I was wondering, that easement that's to the north of the big, the Big Arroyo, the big bridge, whatever you want to call it? Before it heads west, between the railroad tracks and that telephone pole?
Probably going to be on the railroad easement.
Okay.
Yes.
Any word or notice on the construction they're going to do on the 506 from the Army?
Nothing as of yet.
Is that road still in fairly good shape?
It's washboard, because we're so dry right now, but it is passable.
No damage from the?
Nothing as of lately.
RB, have you heard when they were going to do the, put those crossover deals in with fire concrete?
I have not followed up with them recently to see where they are on the planning with that, so I will check with them.
Good morning, Commissioners. Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
I'll start out with the Detention Center. We did receive the closeout documents for that project. They're currently being reviewed by the architects so that we can get that one closed out. The few remaining items, we did finally get a confirmation, they'll be here between June 6th and June 14th, and we'll get those installed and finally have that one completely closed out. Chin's Phase 3, we had a bid opening on April 27th. Unfortunately, all the bids came in over budget, so we had to reject the bids. We went back in and did a quick value engineering to the roofing materials. We went back in and did a quick, um, value engineering to the roofing materials to try to get the cost down from the original, um, design. And that is gonna be this week resubmitted to DFA to get their final approval, and then we'll go back out for bid. We're looking at going out for bid again June first, so hopefully we can get that one done within budget. I, I think we will, um, we didn't really wanna sacrifice the warranty of the roofing material that was specked, but it's a little bit out of our budget on this go around. The EOC, we finished that project on time this month, and, uh, right now, the phone, new phone system's being installed in there, and then Matt and his crew can start moving into that building. The PSAT building this month, drywall was hung and inspected, the tape and texture was completed, and painting was completed yesterday. The ceilings are scheduled to be installed on Monday, and then the lights and trim out of all the MEP will begin, um, next week. The carpet tile's scheduled to be installed May nineteenth, and then the dispatch consoles will be delivered on May twentieth, and they'll start to install those consoles. Currently, that project is remaining on schedule, and everything's kinda falling together and working out on it, so... The road shop building, we completed that this month and, and accepted it, and, and so that's in, in Tom and Eric's hands now. Flickinger Center restrooms, those are completed, and those restrooms are back open. The Borough Flat Storage Tank, we signed a contract with an engineering firm to get the foundation engineering done for that, and we also have the RFP going out for the storage tank itself so that we can get a contract for that. The Tularosa Historical Museum, solar project's complete. Our air fiber upgrade project's complete. And then the, um, my telephone upgrade for the, for the whole county, for all the county buildings, that all started this week, and so it's, uh, in the process, and we're trying to get that wrapped up as soon as possible. And that's about all I have.
Sounds like you haven't been up to much.
Trent, I have a quick question. I've been going through a bunch of our billing and stuff. ESA is made to make some visits to the jail for alarm stuff. When we did the remodel, did we not completely redo the alarm, or we just, did we just do parts of it?
No, it was all redone, the whole thing, um, and all new devices, even in the areas like the pods where they're, they've had the issues. And one of the issues they've had in there i- and we changed a smoke sensor out for a, um, heat sensor to try to mitigate it, but it's over right by a shower. And anytime they run that shower with extremely hot water and get a lot of steam, it tends to, to set that off. Well, in the contract, it was just to change out devices, not relocate them or anything like that in those areas.
So is that why ESA's been, and I should've marked the pages, but they've been two or three times, uh, out there, a hundred and something this time, a hundred and something this time. I'm, I'm wondering why ESA's coming out to, if it should be warranty work?
On that, no, 'cause it's not a faulty device or, or anything done as far as workmanship. It's just basically the location of that device. I had advised that they do something to move that, that device away from them showers a little farther. As far as the project goes, it's nothing on the contractor.
I'll ask Nina when she comes in and see if she's aware of it.
I haven't heard of any additional issues out there. Those were pretty recent, but, uh, it was kind of a rash of them there for a while.
Is that specific? Excuse me, sorry. Is that, that, the question you're asking about ESA, is it specific to the Detention Center?
Says the jail.
Okay. That, they've been currently in our building several times, so that's why I was just curious. And I wasn't sure if I'd differentiate.
But, like I say, it was, it said jail, that's why I was just wondering.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Nina Sissler, uh, Otero County Detention Center, Correctional Services Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, in April, our average population was two hundred. In overall, in, in-house today, excuse me, population is overall with mine out, is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and thirty-four in-house. I have a hundred and thirteen males, twenty-one females. I have eleven at Otero Prison, ten in Huntsville County. I have six on furlough for treatment programs, two on just regular furloughs, and two at other facilities for out-of-county court. And I have two at a sixty-day diagnostic at the prison. I do have two juveniles, uh, housed in Dona Anna County. As far as in-house, uh, courts, I had forty-three municipal in the month of April, a hundred and twenty-six magistrate, a hundred and twenty-seven district. I have forty, I mean, twenty-four, no forty, twenty-four vacancies. I did have a full-time detention officer start May eighth. I have one starting on May fifteenth. I have, um, one in the process of background check. So hopefully, he'll start with it this month, I'm praying. And, um, I have an interview on Friday for one. Trying to coordinate with a gentleman out of San Antonio, Texas, that wants to relocate and work at the Detention Center, um, to get him interviewed as well. There's been some roadblocks there, but we'll figure it out. And then month of April, we transported seven to the Department of Corrections in Central New Mexico Correctional Facility in Las Lunas. And we transported four females to Western New Mexico Correctional Facility in Grants, New Mexico. I wanted to share with you that the National Institute for Jail Operations honored our corrections off, well, detention officers' corrections, um, with this plaque, um, in appreciation this week of correction officers. So he came to present it, and he's gonna present all the detention officers in the state of New Mexico jails and prisons with, uh, an award for appreciation of their work. And, uh, so, I'm gonna hang that nice place. We did have, um, two, uh, in the mail, two contrabands where different incidences were discovered in turned over to Sheriff's Office. We had another incident that, uh, contraband was put in a binder of a Bible and brought in, 'cause we accept Bibles, um, brand-new Bibles to the detainees, and it was manipulated and put into the binder, and the lieutenant was able to catch it before it went to the back of the facility.
Faith and drugs.
Yes. So that was turned over to the, uh, Sheriff's Office as well. And that's it.
Do you have twenty-four openings, is that what you said?
Yes.
That's better.
Yes.
It has been.
Yes, ma'am, yes. It's getting better, and we're, every day it seems like we're getting applications, so it's, I'm still, if I get all of these that I discussed, I still will be lacking eight on shift. And then, once I get the eight on shift, I can start opening transport positions and get some transport officers in place to assist, uh, or take over back from the Sheriff's Office that's doing diligent and, and helping us with that.
That sounds good, that's good news.
Yes, ma'am.
The install of the phones for all the county emergencies, that includes your, the jail too? That, that Trent was speaking of?
The new phone system?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I think we're wanting, not, we haven't been done, completed yet, yes.
But, and is that the one that includes...
No, that's separate. Immate phones are separate from ours. There's some logistics I have to work out as far as with the tablets and, uh, the learning program. So, um, I'm working on it, and it'll, and then they will install the Wi-Fi, they will do all the installment as part of, uh, the whole system. So they will do all, and they will actually, if, even if they have to relocate someone to live in our county, or locally, close by Las Cruces, he will have a technician that can work on any of the systems, so that he will maintain any kind of equipment. Whereas right now, we're in a different position with our phone system, so, our present phone system, so... But I have to work out some logistics, but it's, it's where I am aiming to go.
Do you know if this report that you sent me, is this like a thirty-day report, or never, yeah, it is about a thirty-day report.
Yes, um, that's Curry County. I know you requested it. If you, you and Mr. Marley would like me to send them to you. It's another county in New Mexico, um, that has had a, a lot of success with this, and a lot of educational success with these tablets, 'cause you have to learn to earn, so, um, it, uh, gives some incentive to try, you know? Life skills or any other, and it's been pretty successful.
So in, looks like about a forty-five day period, there's twenty-one hundred classes that have been taken in Curry County with just their, um, inmates.
Yes.
Yes, so that's pretty exciting.
Yes.
And it shows, um, the, uh, thirty-nine brand-new learners, so whether they're brand-new on board or brand-new in their new home.
And location.
Yes. What is a unique learner?
I would have to ask him. I don't know if it's someone that's like, um, that's attended a lot of classes, is my impression when I was reading the article, um, but I'm not sure.
I, you know, and per learner, the one that's actually using the resources, almost six hours, you know, that's, that's, to me, is good. A step forward. And do, do you know if Curry County uses like an incentive program for doing this too, or is it just the tablet?
It's just the tablet, I believe. I, I can reach out to him, the administrator, 'cause I do know him, and...
I'm just kind of excited about this, so...
I can ask him some, I can ask him some questions regarding it, because, uh, if he provides that or not.
Is there any way we could just set it up if they're gonna communicate to do it by email? 'Cause that would eliminate all those drugs coming in by the tablet.
That's what this, this will do. They will, they will actually mail it to somewhere in Texas, then it will be scanned, and they're able to check their mail on the tablet. So it's a, it helps safety and security of the staff as well, and the facility and other inmates, so no one overdoses or anything, 'cause they do manipulate the paper, and they, uh, wet it, and then they do other techniques to make it look crisp, and then they eat the paper. So, um, it just, and when they're under illicit drugs in the facility, taking prescription medication, so many negative results could happen. So it's something that I really think would help the facility a lot, in many different ways, not just education.
And this might be a question for Julianne, but we, I always see our expenses of paying for our inmates to be housed in all these other areas, but I never see the income for us providing services for other counties. Do we have, I mean, I'm assuming we have that income, we have other counties paying us. Where in that report?
Yes, we do. We do receive income. We get quarterly distributions from the state, we also get an annual distribution from the state, and then we also receive funding from, I think like Almagordo, um, Tularosa, other, other areas as well. And I can, I can provide you with that report. It is, if you, it's a large report, but on the quarterly financial statements, there is a, a large, uh, report that shows all of the revenue as well as the expenses, but I can certainly provide you with, um, with the revenue from that, not a problem. I'll get that for you.
And do we bill them?
Yes.
To balance the, the accountability?
We, um, Lincoln County, Almagordo, DPS, um, hold on, Tularosa, uh, I'm trying to think who else, but right now, we're not housing for any other facilities. So if they, but the city, we have a agreement or a contract in place, so, and Tully, of course, they don't have a detention center. And so we house for Lincoln, Tully, um, upon arrest, or if they get arrested from another, from another county or things like that. Normally, we do a little courtesy, and then after, if it's, they're sentenced to our facility, we do charge, um, but, you know, we have an agreement with Lincoln County, so... But right now, I'm not housing for anybody, 'cause I don't have the staffing to maintain it, so I try to keep my numbers at a certain level so that it's safe, um, for everybody, so...
So I found in one service call from ESA, it's on the jail repair, it says, "Service call, smoke detector, excessive signals, jail repair and maintenance." That's why I was asking Trent, I don't know if you heard me ask Trent?
Yes, sir. This, even previous to them reinstalling these, we had problems. It is, I don't think the, I mean, of course, there's airflow because we have air conditioners and things like that, but those, the housing, it's normally the female housing, they're really small compared to the, um, general population, and so it's very, when it, and then the water gets hot, it steams in there, and we switched them, as Trent said, to, from smoke to, uh, heat sensors. They don't go off as frequent, but they still go off sometimes. It's, it's been an issue since I can remember. They did switch two out recently, um, so hopefully, 'cause sometimes they are defective, and I think one was in one of the female housings, and so they did replace that, and we haven't had any, um, alerts in that one, but the one next to it now, we're having, uh, we had a few calls, uh, alarms set out. But now, uh, I don't think, within the past couple of weeks, we have not.
And those are brand-new units, the one that went out?
The heat sensor, we put a new one in, on, in one of the pods, and then the other one, they tested it, and it was just the amount of steam in there.
The reason why I'm saying is, if these were all done during construction, they should've went through, back through the builder. If it was an issue of installation or design or whatever, it could've went back that way. We start stepping in and fixing stuff, and they're gonna avoid any warranty on some of this stuff, so we gotta be real careful on... And like I said, you charge us three hundred and forty-five dollars to come out there and do that. It needs to get moved, relocated, it needs to get moved and relocated.
Yeah, and we'll do that. It just, every time the alarms go off, the fire department is notified, so we, uh, they call us, and sometimes they're, they're en route to the facility as well because the alarm sets. Normally, dispatch does call the facility and say, "Is it a false alarm?", and we'll walk through, and we walk through the housing unit. But previous to this, before construction, we had issues as well. It's just the location, and I may have to have, um, our maintenance see about getting estimates on relocating those, or if we can. That's a really, the one that's going off right now is a very small housing unit, so I don't even know where it would relocate to, um, other than the other ones that are in there. It's my smallest female housing, so, and it's kinda narrow, so, but I'm sure they can maybe figure it out, or it can be.
Yeah, this one was done on three twenty-seven or twenty-three, so...
Right, yes. Yeah, 'cause it sets it off, I, I mean, frequently. The one in the, the other housing was, uh, definitely defective, um, so, um, yeah, so they replaced that one.
So you might get with Trent on some of this stuff, when they have an issue like that, to check and see if this is warranty stuff or if it's our deal?
Yes, I sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Hey, we don't have the Forest Service listed on this, but since they said they'd start coming monthly, do you guys wanna come give us some type of an update or anything?
We still have the mouse. You're being good. I am. I'm from the ranchers.
Me too.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Marjorie's here too.
She's coming.
Thank you, I couldn't wait, Jen. Well, for those of you I have not had the opportunity to meet, my name is Erica Luna. I am the acting Forest Supervisor. Travis Mosley has taken another position, and so, thank you so much for having us today. We do intend to be here on a regular basis. Bob Foxworth was not able to make it, but he'll also, um, be in attendance in the future. And, um, I must admit, I'm not quite sure what the, excuse me, agreement was, um, or what you all would like to hear. So let me just start off by seeing if there's any questions.
Okay, I, we just knew that you were gonna start coming. You said you wouldn't, we appreciate that. So if you had any updates or anything, I know Kelly Goss is here, and we'll be talking about a letter that we're gonna send to, to BLM. So I didn't know if you guys had any kinda updates you wanted to, to just give us, and I'm glad you introduced yourself so that everyone knows who you are, 'cause I've, I've been at several meetings with you now, so, and I appreciate the fact that you're, I feel like you're actually listening to us, and, and I feel like you're more open than we've had in the past. So I wanna say I appreciate that, so...
Well, thank you so much. This is my third week, so still, actually, I met you on my first day, and so, um, you know, I'm, I'm still kinda getting the lay of the land. I don't have a fire update, we don't really have anything on the ground right now. Been working closely, there was something on state, there was... There was really good coordination. The dispatch is, is just awesome, so good things there. We are working our way through a few different biological opinions, working with the service, getting our hands wrapped around what the, what we're going to really focus on this summer. So I don't have an update for that, for you yet, but I will, because I really want to just lay out, what, what is our focus? What are we going to be really doing this summer so that you're all just very aware of that? Internally, we are moving towards just a stronger five-year planning cycle to really figure out what needs to be done. As you all know, there are quite a few endangered species on the forest and that adds some of the complexity to how we plan our work. And so we're, we're just lining that out in a way that we can be more efficient and get work done on the ground. So I'm working on a priority letter for the rest of twenty-three and then into fiscal year twenty-four for the forest. So that's all going pretty well. Let's see. What else am I missing? Okay, I think, okay, I think I heard forest plan revision. So, yes, forest plan revision. It's, it's not done yet. We are working on it. And I will have a better timeline for you. Actually, I can get you a better timeline before next month's meeting, because I do want to make sure that that is, is very transparent. We're also working on putting together some updates for the website, just so again, some of these things are just clearer, better understanding. I want to make sure that there's just better communication with the public and I want everybody to know what's going on. We're, we're going to be very transparent about that, and so I apologize, I don't have a date for you on that.
I have a couple of questions. Is the Forest Service going to approach Department of Game and Fish to, on the elk situation?
So I have been in contact with Game and Fish. We are putting together a meeting, so when we met two and a half weeks ago or so, I told you that I would do that and I have. So I've been talking to Game and Fish and the service as well. And we are looking at scheduling a meeting that you all will be invited to. I've been working with Kelly and Spike also to talk about that situation. You know, like I said, when we met last, I only have so much flexibility. You know, I can't tell the state what to do in that area, but we can certainly continue to have those conversations. We are aware of those issues and those numbers, and we are going to have to work together on that.
Okay, because when you say you don't really have any authority, and I'm not starting off on the wrong foot.
No, we're good.
The Forest Service is putting authority on allotment owners, which the elk are affecting them very much. You're cutting their numbers down. So this, in my eyes, is a very important deal that needs to take place.
Sure.
Whether it needs to go higher up, but it's something that is affecting more than just the hunters of the state of New Mexico.
Yes, sir.
My next question is, have you got any projects coming up on any logging, logging projects, thinning projects to start working on our forest?
So yes, so we have been working with the state on sixteen springs. There's six hundred and sixty-seven acres that the, the state is going to be working on mastication. So that NEPA is done, and I don't know exactly what that start date is, but I know that's going to be a big one. And then we're also working, so when I was talking about those five-year plans, so that's where I'm trying to just get my arms wrapped around exactly what those. And yes, there is some, some thinning projects planned. We did have a, a logging area that was opened up that went no bid, which means that we didn't have anybody bid on it. So we're working on repackaging that and looking at some ways to make that more flexible so that we can get somebody in there to do that work. So there's a few things like that where there were some hiccups and we're working through those. But that's part of the list that I will provide.
Okay. What other questions did I have?
I think, thank you for being here first. If you could just keep us posted with any kind of public meetings, you know, your five-year plan, public input, anything like that. I think that way we can know way ahead of time versus the day of kind of thing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think I'll end by saying that I had a really good conversation with Senator Griggs. Actually, I was chatting with your husband at the, the Earth Day celebration at the zoo and ran into the senator and so we were talking. And, you know, he had a great idea and asked if we would be open to doing some kind of like an open house at the district. And so I've been talking to Bob, so I don't have a date yet, but we are looking at having an open house in Cloudcroft. Now, that's certainly something that we can do anywhere. And so if, if there's any input from you all, if there's something that, that constituents, that the local public would, would like to see from us, you know, we're here to serve the public and, and I want to open that up and really get input and just have a better sense of, of what the community interests are. So I'm very open to those ideas and would appreciate any feedback that you have.
It would be good to have Laura Doff there and maybe talk about some of his fire prevention and the thinning and what's available for that around people's homes.
Sure.
We definitely need that.
And Richard Miller? I can't remember his name from Timbuktu, the Firewise Program Two. Yeah, isn't his name, I can't, yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for coming today. We appreciate it.
All right, we look forward to seeing you next month and I'm sure we'll see you before that as well.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the consent agenda items on number eight, we left out Southwest Customs. Can I, we want, we're okay to approve it. It's listed on the sheet behind it. All six of the companies are listed, but Southwest isn't actually listed. So if I just read it and add it, we're okay with that?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
And you wanted to pull number eleven to discuss?
Number eleven, yes.
Okay, we're going to pull number eleven for discussion, and you didn't have anything to pull, did you? Okay. All right, here we go. Okay, number one, request approval of accounts payable bills list thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two. Number two, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for May. Number three, request approval of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three special budget meeting minutes. Number four, request approval of April sixth, twenty-twenty-three special budget meeting minutes. Number five, request approval of April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Number six, request approval of April twentieth, special meeting minutes. Number seven, request approval of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three special budget meeting minutes. Holy moly. Okay, number eight, request approval to award sealed bid twenty-three dash zero zero nine emergency vehicle equipment, parts and labor contract to six vendors. Whack-Up Lifters LLC, Accessories Unlimited, Spartan Shield Upfitters, Wicked Upfitters LLC, MHQ West, and Southwest Customs. This is a multi-source award contract for one year with option to renew for an addition of three years, not to exceed a total of four years. Number nine, request approval to award sealed bid twenty-three dash zero one eight drug screening services contract with white sands, drug and alcohol compliance. This is a one-year contract with option to renew for an additional three years, not to exceed a total of four years. Number ten, request approval to award RFP twenty-three dash zero one nine auditor services contract to Hinkle and Landers for the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars excluding New Mexico grocery receipts. This is a one-year contract with option to renew for an additional two years, not to exceed a total of three years. Excuse me. Skip to number eleven. Number twelve, request approval of resolution number five dash eleven dash twenty-three, one eleven dash fifty-four budget adjustments. Number thirteen, request approval of resolution number five dash eleven dash twenty-three slash one eleven fifty-five. Approval to apply for Department of Defense, Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program grant for Lawless Gate Road project. Number fourteen, request approval of an agreement between Otero County and Spyglass Group LLC to perform internal cost reduction analysis. Number fifteen, request approval to apply for a Department of Transportation grant for the Timberon guardrail. Okay.
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to pull number eleven to discuss the approval of resolution number five dash eleven, twenty-three dash one eleven dash fifty-two to establish a schedule of fees to the Otero County subdivision ordinance.
So I just had a question established, so we've never done this before?
We do it every year.
Oh, every year, so.
It's done every year. It's a housekeeping, and my understanding and talking to RB, we should renew the fees every year. And we've done them every year in May.
And the fees are the same?
The, the fees are the same.
And comparatively to other counties?
I, I looked at that briefly and I was able to find it for some more comparative counties. I found Sandoval in Bernalillo and Taos. We are lower, on some categories, we're close to them, others, we were lower. But again, those are, are bigger counties and probably higher income values. But if you do want to have us look at it more thoroughly and analyze where we're at and where we could go, we could table it and put it on next month's agenda if you'd like to consider raising those.
About how much revenue do we collect annually from this?
So, one of the things that we do, the most common item that we address is the claim of exemption. And there's a fifteen-dollar fee for that. This year, we have done twenty. Last year, claim of exemptions, we did fifty-one. So.
So it's not?
No, it's not. And I think that it's reasonable when we have the subdivisions from Chaperal. You know, if they have a hundred and fifty lots at a hundred dollars a lot. You know, that's, that's where it makes a significant difference.
Okay, so I misread it. I figured it was a complete subdivision, not by lot.
No, no, it's per lot. It's per lot, I believe is the way it's listed, right?
On the big ones, ten dollars per parcel.
Ten dollars per lot, that's right. Yeah, so that's where, that's where we make more money, but again, we don't have subdivisions on a regular basis.
Yeah, I don't want to make it to where they don't want to come to our county and build, for sure, but that's the only questions I had.
Really, it should be tied to reimbursing our, our expenses for performing the work, not necessarily getting revenue.
Right. Okay.
You okay with that? Okay, all right. All right, I make a motion for the approval of resolution number five dash eleven, twenty-three, one eleven dash fifty-two to establish a schedule of fees pursuant to the Otero County subdivision ordinance. You get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're going to move on to Schedule Citizen Communications. We have Peg Grim.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. And everybody else.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me come back and talk to you again. Just as a reminder, I'm with one hundred percent Otero. And do I have a clicker or do you need to click for?
I need to click.
Okay, click. We're a grassroots nonprofit. Our goal is to eliminate childhood trauma in Otero County so that one hundred percent of our kids can grow up to be healthy and responsible and productive citizens. And we do that by supporting families in the ten vital services. And the first five, if you remember, that old Maslow's hierarchy of needs. In the bottom part of his pyramid, you know, you need those things of security, food, housing. Those things are our first five services that we call our surviving services. And the other five are ten thriving services to help people be successful and with their families and growing up successfully. And thank you for your financial support, for doing the PIT count. And so I'm here to talk about the PIT count. I mean, I could talk all day about all those other things, but I'll limit myself just to the PIT count. Go ahead. The PIT count is a nationwide count to estimate how many homeless people are experiencing homelessness across our country, and all communities do it. The part that we spent most of our effort and time, money, everything on is the in-sheltered PIT count. And that means for people who had no safe place to stay, that they do not have a long-term place that they can stay. There's also the shelter PIT count, which is people who had a temporary place to stay, but still do not have permanent housing.
Ma'am, could you either like pick up the microphone or speak closer to it so people watching can hear you? It's not picking up from.
I, I don't think they can sit still, so I'll try.
Okay, thank you.
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. So what we did this year, we did a lot of outreach, both, you know, newspaper, radio, those things for people like me. And we tried to do social media for younger people and just got it out anywhere we could in the community. We had twenty-seven people who volunteered to help us, took the training and all that. Not all of them were able to help when it happened, but I thought that was a nice response from the community of people willing to help. The PIT count is based on where people slept the evening of Monday, January thirtieth. And then we had the week after that to go out and find them, talk to them, find out where they slept that night and if they were willing, answer questions. We partnered with a lot of organizations and people and, you know, places in town, and that was really helpful. So if people who were homeless came to any of these places, whether they were looking for services or had to be there for something, you know, they also connected us so that we could survey them. And the mobile teams is where most of the work got done, is we went out to parks, parking lots, food pantries, laundromats, bus stops, all those places. And we just asked people, "Where did you sleep on Monday night?" And if they said someplace that was not, you know, meant for human habitation wasn't safe, then we would ask them if they would answer additional questions. Most people were willing to answer questions. We had a couple who didn't want to. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the community health workers from Gerald Champion. They were awesome. They were out in the community, talking to people everywhere. We also had some, they're actually residents, I think, not interns, from the hospital that helped. Employees from all those places we partnered with, the public schools had their mobile health unit out and they were talking to people. And then we had a lot of individual volunteers. So here's, I'm going to real quickly just go over the data. You have it in there. I have some hard copies of this or it's available online if anybody else wants to look at this. But, is it dry in here or is it me? It's dry. Okay. We had forty surveys and that represented forty-nine people. So that means some of the people were, you know, they had a spouse or a partner that they were living with or kids with them or something. We just interviewed one person in each family. The ages were all over the board, as you can see. We, there were four children under eighteen who their parents, you know, said they had kids with them. And you can just go through this. Most, two-thirds were male. You know, many of these people, it's been years since they've had stable housing. Over half were from New Mexico, so were local folks. Only a small percentage had military experience. And this is of the people we talked to. We also know that, you know, we did not talk to every person in Otero County that is homeless. You know, we, some of them we just missed. We couldn't find them, but we're hoping that as we do this every year, they'll get used to it and everybody will know about it, trust us, and let us come talk to them. I think that one's a real important one, that two-thirds of the people reported mental health conditions. So that's something where we, you know, I don't know, it's the chicken and the egg. Did they have mental health conditions that helped cause them to become homeless? Were they homeless and that helped cause mental health conditions? I don't know the answer to that, but it's, it's a place where we could put some of our focus to, as a community, to try to help these folks. Ten percent were homeless because of domestic violence and. Ten percent were homeless because of domestic violence, and, and one more. One of the questions is why you didn't stay in a shelter that night, and so at this time, because when we did this was just when Pastor Anthony and Runner's Refuge was opening the shelter. So some people didn't know about it, at that time at the shelter, they did not have space for women, they just had space for men. I think now they do have space for women, is that, yeah, that's correct. But they don't take dogs, and so people who had animals also said they wouldn't go to the shelter because they couldn't take their pet with them. If you can go back a second, you know, that's, well, you can leave it, that's okay. That's the data, the hard data. I guess what I wanted to mention was, I was out in the field talking to people, and it's my, I guess what I got from it, these people were very willing to talk to me, they were happy that someone was sitting down face-to-face with them, having eye contact, treating them as a human being, they appreciated that, and they were willing to talk about why they ended up there and admit that, you know, maybe they made some bad choices, or they needed additional help, and so it was very, it was just, it was hard to do, but it was really good to do to learn about these people and build a relationship with them. One of the things, my observation of the people I talked to is, so many of them were so kind-hearted. One of the ones that stuck out to me, we were interviewing a young man who all he had was a little plot of land, and he's building himself a shelter out of pallets. And he was letting another young man stay with him because he was worse off. And so I just thought that was so kind, you know, he was trying to take care of his buddy even when he had so little. Now we can go ahead. I mentioned there was also the sheltered count, so in shelters that night here in Alamagordo, at Coke, we had eleven adults and three children. At Runner's Refuge, there were three adults on that night, I keep forgetting about this, can they hear me? And lastly, and this one to me is just tragic, is we had a hundred and sixty students here in our community that went to school that day and were not prepared to learn in any way. They did not have a safe place to stay the night before. So you can only imagine, if you went to school in the morning, you were worried about where your next meal was coming from, you were worried about where you were going to sleep that night, if mom or dad were going to be there or whoever, if you were going to get any sleep, if you were exhausted from not getting sleep, there's a hundred and sixty students who, you know, they're already at a disadvantage, and their life trajectory is less because if they don't have a safe place to sleep. Now, the schools are doing what, they are doing a lot of work on this and are trying to help them out, but that just is a lot of kids that, you know, we're failing as a community, I feel like. So that's another one I think we need to work on. Now what? Well, I want to go back a minute, so, you know, I've been, no, no, you can leave, I'm sorry, I'll try to be a better speaker and follow the cards and stuff. You know, over the last few days, and I did talk to the city commission the other night, I was sitting there thinking, you know, what am I going to say, what do I say about all this? And I was listening to a podcast, and they talked about the bystander effect, and that is when a lot of people see something that needs to be done, needs to be fixed, taken care of, everyone wrongly assumes that someone else will take care of it. And it seems to me this applies to our homeless situation. The other thing they said is that as the number of people who potentially could help increases, the number of people that do help decreases.
The number of people that help increase...
The more people that could help that are there...
Decrease the homelessness? I'm sure I'm not dyslexic.
When there's a lot of people that see something going on, say if it was an injury or an accident, if there's a whole crowd there, everybody says, oh, somebody else will take care of it, and very few people help. Whereas if there's just a few people, you look around, you're like, I guess I got to do it, and you absolutely do it, I guess. And they say that there's a quirk in our mind that we think, rather than thinking of what I can do to help, we think, what if I do the wrong thing, what if I say the wrong thing, what if they don't want my help, what if it's rude, you know, all the things that can go through your mind. So that's kind of the bad news, that our minds do that. But the good news is that the research shows that when we do help someone or do some act of kindness, not only do they feel better because somebody did something nice for them, but you feel better for doing it. So hopefully, as a community, we can do that and help these people out. So, if you can just go through this slide, and we're going to continue to do future PIT counts, you'll probably see us here next year asking you to help again, and if any of you want to come out with us, we'd love to have you come out, and it is an eye-opening experience, but it is good. Anybody who wants a copy of the report, it's on our website right there, I also have a few hard copies here if anybody would like it. You can look at state statistics at the New Mexico Coalition to End Homelessness, and there's also nationwide statistics out there. So are there any questions?
How did you get the numbers on the kids at the school? How did you do, come up with those?
We talked to people at the schools.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they keep track of it, on there it said the McKinney Vento, that's a law, and under that law, it actually has a slightly different definition, if kids are crashed at the neighbors on the couch or something, but they don't have their own permanent housing, they're counted as homeless. But the schools keep track of that.
Can I have a few more?
What's that?
Isn't there more the community can do? There's a lot of empty buildings, can they pick them up for these type of people and have homes for different, you know, all these people?
Well, we got to work together and do it, we got to come up with some money and some...
Unity.
What's that?
Unity.
Yep, yep. If you'd like to join 100% Communities Housing Group, we'd love to have you.
I would.
All right, we'll get your name.
I noticed that the data in 2021, there was considerably more responses, what accounts for that?
Well, we're not exactly sure, but different people did it, and at that time, there was also, and I'm not exactly familiar with it, I've just heard about it on, maybe on Canal Street or something, there was a place where they gave out food or clothing and stuff, supplies that people need, and so a lot of people came there, and so they were able to talk to more people, is what we think, but we don't know for sure. And that's why, you know, we know we don't, haven't gotten everybody, but we just want to look at the trends over the years, that's the best we can do, probably. Did you have any questions?
I've read that book, I bought that 100% Community book, now I'm going rereading it, it's actually a very easy read.
Yeah.
Very easy to understand, I recommend everybody to read that book, because I think, I'm in my second time around, I think developing a plan from that and the committees is a perfect little guideline, so it's 100% Community, I bought it on Amazon, I think like thirty bucks.
And you can also download it for free, and I can get you the website where you can do that, or I don't know how the best way to get it out to people, but people can, if you live in New Mexico, you can download it for free. So thank you, I'm glad you did that, that's great, and thanks for coming to our summit, that was excellent to have you there.
Yep, I plan on getting more involved, for sure, just...
I heard you were going to be on the housing team.
I am on the housing committee.
All right.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Joan Griggs and Jan Waffle?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jan Waffle, as you know, and this is my director for Desert Light Film Festival, Joan Griggs.
I had no idea.
Had a pretty good turnout the other day.
Actually, we did, I sent over a few pictures for you so that you could get an idea of what the festival looks like, and I believe...
Not like that.
No, not like that. I don't know if we have those pictures available here in this format, I did not bring them with me, I just sent them ahead. But we have festival pictures from this year that I'll be able to share if you want to see more. We wound up having about two-hundred and seventy students, and along with our teachers and committee members and workers, there was well over three-hundred.
Would you explain to everybody that's here what we're talking about, because some of them probably don't know.
Okay.
And it's pretty cool.
Back in 2004, there were two film festivals started, Joan Griggs is the founder of both of those, she was the film liaison before me, and she founded a professional film festival for commercial and entertainment filmmakers, and then also an educational film festival for students, New Mexico middle school and high school students. And the thought behind all of this is to grow the film industry from the ground up with our own children who grow into functioning adults who do not have to get their degree in film art and go to Los Angeles, or to Canada, or to Florida, or New York to make films. And the burgeoning film industry here in New Mexico, in the twenty years that we have seen this happen, is now in a situation where they don't have to leave New Mexico in order to make a good living in the film industry here in New Mexico. So this has been the intent behind all of it, plus to raise awareness of the value of the film industry in economic development ways in rural communities like ours, where there are no studios and there is rural filmmaking that goes on on a continuous basis. So raising that awareness in the view of the public and of our officials, so that they know that it's bringing value and money into the community. Every dollar spent in the film industry now through the own study is spent up to eight times in the community, and that's where people pay their workers, they pay their rent, they buy gasoline and food and clothes, and utilize all of our products, goods and services in the area. And then, of course, our hotels, when people come to town, that's a big part of our hotels revenue as well.
And you also had a speaker that's from Alamagordo, correct, and he's very successful now?
I'll let Joan talk about him, because for twenty years, this was her dream to have this person be our keynote speaker. So Don Foster is the gentleman that, it had just been my dream always for him to be the keynote speaker, we have had some fabulous keynote speakers through the years, I will say, but he was everything I had hoped for. He's a comedy sitcom writer, Two and a Half Men, Mike and Molly, and things like that, so not necessarily ones that you see today, but, so, a little further back, but surprisingly, when he asked the kids, were they familiar with sitcoms he had written, so many raised their hands, so I was delighted about that.
Big Bang Theory was one of those as well.
For sure.
They all know that one.
So he presented and showed some clips and kind of talked about what it took to write that, oh, yeah, and, yeah, okay, so I'm all distracted going back to that moment. So we did have, the morning was at NMSU Alamagordo, this is at the Taze Center, and it really turned out brilliantly, they were remodeling the Roavek, which probably, I will say, one of the reasons it has not been a big splash here in town, and I haven't just continuously promoted it through, I've had a hard number, the Roavek could seat two-hundred people, and so I already had to divide the kids into two groups, and so I just, I couldn't have additional people come. But since it was at the Roavek, it was available to lots of people, and other people did come, they heard about it, maybe homeschool kids would come and their parents, so it was delightful. So Don was a big hit, kids were taking their pictures with him, and I think he was maybe the most popular speaker we'd ever had. But I will say, prior to Don, his fiancee presented, and that was brilliant, she is an underwater diver and photographer, and she has very specific training in editing that type, there you go. Oh my goodness, she presented live from the Maldives, where she was training people, and she was an excellent presenter. So anyway, the morning was brilliant, the afternoon, we went to the Flickinter Center, all the kids could see their films on the big screen, well, I will say, not every kid, we only showed the top three or four in each category. So when you have a hundred and forty-plus entries, and you're only going to get down to about twenty-four, so not all the kids did see their films, but the best ones were shown, and this was the best of festival. So he came, I could look back in our records, and he was winning first place awards as a middle school student, and now he won best of festival, and is that not a brilliant poster? That is probably the best prize the best festival winner would win, was a theater-sized poster, one for their school, one for their own bedroom. So, yeah, it was, it was a great day.
So tell them where he was going.
Well, he was on his way, so the, this is a music video that Mason did, and he was on his way to meet with, her name is Madison Beer, and she is the songwriter, so he left directly from here and drove to LA because he had a meeting the next morning with her, so.
Nice.
Very nice.
It just was a wonderful day, yeah. Then these are the kids from his high school that worked on all that high school set of films and helped with the festival entries that came from their school. So it was Oregon Mountain School and not Centennial, over in Las Cruces. But we've done this for twenty years, Joan and I were co-directors up until I retired from the city of Alamagordo, and then once that happened, I stepped down from co-directorship in order to let her navigate with Otero County, which was a part of the city, so the Otero County Economic Development Council, and they were the EDD umbrella for the organization to be under for Desert Light, because film belongs under economic development at the state level and at the local level.
You guys have done an amazing job.
It truly has been fun, I'm so proud of what we've been able to do, and there have been thousands of kids who have participated in this program. Some school districts have used it as their program, we have six categories, and so they just divide those out, and the kids do them throughout the year.
That's a great idea.
So, for someone who didn't know much about film at all when I started, I've learned a lot, and it's been a fun, fun journey.
It really has been great. The reason that we're here reporting to you today, part of that reason is because we have a presentation for you. There are very few entities that have been with us since the very beginning of this twenty-year journey, and now that we've probably had our final festival, it would be NMSU Alamagordo and Otero County Film Office, supported by you, that has been the two entities that have always sponsored this film festival and been with it from the very beginning. So Joan was the original film liaison in 2004, you went to the college in five or six?
Uh, six.
In six, and that's when I began, and so we've worked together ever since the first film festivals, and we have a presentation for the county commission and administration for their sponsorship. Let me read this to you, the Desert Light Film Festival awards to Otero County of New Mexico, County Commission and Administration, the twentieth annual festival 2023 Diamond Sponsorship, Otero County Film Office Certificate of Appreciation, on April... on April the 28th, 2023, signed by Joan Griggs and Jan Wopple. So we'd like to present this to you and see if we can get someone to take a picture on one of our phones.
Do that.
To let you know how grateful we've been. Fun journey.
We send, we send, we send.
All right. There you go. Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it so much.
Yes.
Thank you. You have my shoes.
Thanks.
Oh, okay, great.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
And you did have a couple of questions, Ward?
The, I follow the, try to follow the YouTube videos for the Almagordo High School's film, their finals where they present their documentary that they usually make. They're fantastic. Are you involved with that portion of the schools at all that developed that?
I will say, we don't give them, so Kathy Wallace is the film teacher at the high school. And she has a real passion for the history of Otero County. She's the one who drives that. She works with the Tuilosa Basin Historical Society Museum. She, but she also sends kids wherever it takes them that is reasonable, that they could drive to, to develop their documentaries. All we do is judge, we don't actually judge them. We send them out for judging. But, so, we receive them, we get them out for judging. But Kathy Wallace is the driving force behind all of that, and she has done a beautiful job. Yes.
The film industry in Las Cruces, they got hold of Forrest Smith and took him over to the Charter School to their film class. And he sat down with them and, and not just spoke to them. He sat down with them, on their tables, and I guess it was a hit.
Oh, I can only imagine. He's quite entertaining.
He is quite entertaining.
If we need to do something like that, get him over here, it'd be great to have him talk to the kids.
Well, and we will tell you that this, being this was our last festival, that our umbrella's gone now to host it under. And we showed two of the documentaries from Almagordo High School. One of them was from 2010. And it was a cinematic music video that incorporated all of local filming and won Best of Festival that year. And we showed Riding with Private Malone, which incorporates a serviceman that was stationed in the military here and a story along with the song. But the, this year we had a special award called the Sunshine Award. And that award was for any film that uplifted the human spirit and shined a light on hope and peace and things that human nature really aspires to be. And the Sunshine Award this year was won by the documentary for The Murder at the Mortuary here in Almagordo because it showed perseverance and love of community and a gentleman that recovered from some of the most tragic things you can go through in your life and persevered.
I'm just writing that down. I haven't seen that one.
Yep.
It's very good. Both of them. If you get a chance to view either one of them.
Can I spell it today?
They're both brilliant.
And then the documentary I watched from this year, Graduate Students, was actually a former county commissioner, Ronnie Reardon. I had no idea.
I didn't either.
The history. So all of you have to just look for it. The, I think it's called Foxworth Gabberth House is the name of the video. Go to YouTube and find it. It's pretty cool.
The Jackson House.
Oh, Jackson House.
Right. And they did the haunting of 1309 Michigan as well that was also either an honorable mention or a category winner in 2011 or 2012. So they have done some outstanding work. And I have to tell you that when this program and this film festival started, they were working with the barest kind of equipment that you could possibly imagine. They did not have funding for the cameras and the things that they needed. And they were finding a way to do it on their own.
That's all we got. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have anybody sign up for unscheduled? Okay, Marcia Sturman?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're having a little bit easier job this time than you did last time. Holy smokes, that was something. Before I get started, I got to find this on here. Just take a second. I had it marked and you know how it is when you try and go back and find what you had marked. Okay, here we go. Okay. There is a provision within the New Mexico law that allows for people who are not happy with what the legislature has done, they can do a petition. So there's one going on right now statewide and it's called the Referendum Project. And I have several of these with me today. They are the more egregious bills that are, that are, that people are unhappy with in New Mexico. And every county has a petition going. And there are several of us in Otero that are doing this. But I wanted to mention that Saturday at noon, there is a drive-through where you can just stay in your car and they'll bring you a petition to sign. And there are five at one time. They're usually put together. What makes it easier, just flip a page and sign them. But they're going to be having a drive-through at the parking lot at the fairgrounds this Saturday. That's going to be going on. I also have several with me right now. For people who are unfamiliar, there are five particular bills. And I say them in order because that's the way I can remember them. There's four, seven, 13, 180, and 397. And these two of them have to do with abortion and transgender in the public schools. And they have to do with, the other one, two, two other ones have to do with changing the election laws that make it awfully tempting to not do the right thing. And then one of those has to do with silencing or objection to any of this. And so if anyone is in agreement that these are probably things that should be put on the ballot, not just blanket voted by the legislature, these should be put on the ballot, then it doesn't matter whether you're an independent, a Republican, or a Democrat, you can sign this if you're a registered voter because this is a bipartisan effort. And it's going on statewide. We need 180,000 signatures. That's 25% of the total vote last time. And Otero needs 4,422, and we're working on it. That's an awful lot. And the word hasn't gotten out very well. So I wanted to let you know about that. And then I want to say thank you to the sheriff because I had some real concerns about today and what's happening as a result of the cartels sending their slaves up here. And I have real issue with that happening. And I appreciate the fact that you're on it. I knew you would be, but I appreciate that. And I know y'all are going to be keeping very, very much abreast of what's happening. So if, if anyone wants to sign these signatures, they're available. I have them.
Okay. And there's one more bill that's going to come out. There's going to be six total.
Yes.
And you need to make sure you sign it for the county you live in.
Yes, it has to be by the county you live in. And if you live in Lincoln, you have to sign Lincoln's. And I have only Otero with me today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Matherly, what's that?
Our weekly meeting.
Yes. Commissioner Matherly, Commissioner Markort, Commissioner Barella, Mr. Nichols. I'm here just to say thank you. That's why I'm here today. Last year, it's been almost a year that I was sitting right here trying to keep myself together as my husband was gathering cattle to sell them. And we did not know at that point if we would even be in business at this time this year. But I just want to thank you. You made an effort to go to meetings. You answered emails. You took the time to learn what was happening up on that mountain. And you, at those meetings, your concern, your insight, it was great. And we don't think we would be in business today if it wasn't for what you guys have done for us. And, and Mr. Nichols, again, your insight, your concerns. You provided options to the Forest Service. Unfortunately, they didn't take a lot of those options to find a resolution. They have expressed their desire to work with us to come up to, for a resolution so we can stay in business and we'll see, see how that works out. But this county is blessed to have you as our commissioners. Vicki, we're blessed to have you as our commissioner for our district. This county is blessed to have Mr. Nichols as, as a county attorney. And I know you guys take a lot of heat over a lot of things and we won't always agree on everything. But I just want to say how grateful we are to, to have you in this county. Not only on our issue, but other issues as well. And we had that meeting with the BA, where, actually before the BA, where Spike presented all that document, documentation. And we didn't see any of that taken into consideration in the BA. So we have a lot of work to do with the Forest Service. But we're hoping that we can find a resolution. And, and we didn't get the numbers that we thought, but we weren't where we thought we were going to be with, with either no cattle or...
It wasn't as bad.
It wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be. So, so thank you. We appreciate it. And Spike says the same thing.
Well, we, we're glad to help fight for you. And I wanted to let you know I was in Angel Fire last week for a county meeting. And when I was coming home, I was driving down between Angel Fire and Taos. And I saw these people on the side. It's a beautiful drive down through there. And I thought, what the heck are all those people doing? They were putting up another explosion. It's right along the water. And I just wanted to cry because it's beautiful up there and they're just fencing it off right down that water.
It's heartbreaking, isn't it?
It just breaks your heart. And then, you know, before that, I was looking at all the view of cattle out there grazing and it's just gorgeous up there. And then I can, you know, it's just, it breaks your heart what's going on right now in the forest. So we got to keep fighting.
Yes. And for us, it was just nice to know we weren't alone, that we weren't in that room fighting against the government alone. So we appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
We appreciate you and Spike.
Thank you. Thank you for continuing the fight because your fight leads our state. So thank you for that.
Okay, that was, okay, we're going to move on to new business now. Number 19, request approval of resolution number 5-11-23/111-53 setting the county license tax for county liquor license.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is an option that both counties and municipalities have at their disposal. The state statute sets a maximum of $250 that you could charge. And this would apply to retailers, wineries, brewers, anyone selling alcohol. And that would also include any clubs. And for us, it would fall in the unincorporated area. So I was trying to, to think where some of these things fall. And I'm not 100% certain the VFW may be outside the city limits, but I'm not aware of any other clubs. You know, there's probably in Timbuktu, I believe there's a bar. I get reports that there's an illegal bar. I don't know if we can tax that one, but...
Don't even get started on that.
Tax it differently.
But, you know, it'd probably apply to Heart of the Desert and McGinn's. We have not historically charged this fee. So I think there is some concern instituting it when they've been operating without it. And of course, I have moral issues with paying the crown for permission to do something such as sell alcohol. So for what it's worth, that's my two cents.
Well, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing it. I mean, we haven't done it in the past. I don't see any reason to start it now. I certainly don't want to add any more tax burden onto our county, so.
And we...
I'm a big fat no.
And we, with the last couple of sessions, have hurt our industry, the value of their licenses. And, and I don't think it's fair writing out a tax on top of that.
So the way this is worded, you would still pass it, but it would, in the second whereas clause, it would remain the same and have a zero next to it. And, and then under now therefore it be resolved, it would be a rate of zero for the fiscal year.
Okay. So we'll pass it, but it's zero?
Yes.
Okay.
So remain the same?
You're going to vote it to remain the same?
Right. All right. We're going to make a motion for the approval of resolution 05-11-23/111-53 setting the county license tax for county liquor license to remain at zero.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doke. Number 20, request approval of resolution number 5-11-23-111-56 establishing the salaries for incoming Otero County elected officials.
Okay, commissioners. So the, the state legislature sets maximum caps on what elected officials can receive for pay. And the county commission is then given the discretion to set that pay underneath that cap. Ours are currently at the 2013 maximum limit set by the legislature. They updated it in 2018 to the higher amounts that are proposed today. As I've talked about in the budget hearings, one way to look at this is, is how much the value of the dollar has decreased over these years and how much money would be needed to equal that salary back in 2013. But we've discussed it heavily in, in budget hearings already. So the only other point they'll make is that these amounts would not go into effect until 2025 because elected officials' pay can't be raised midterm. It's only once they come into office. And so it would, it, I think we have treasurer and sheriff and one commissioner and probate judge.
Clerk.
Clerk. Those are the ones that would affect, and then it would not affect the other ones until 2027. So dollar's going to keep going down. And there is a chance that the state will increase the caps also between now and then sometime.
Well, I, I can speak to this because I've been thinking about it a lot. And I, I'm in favor of this because, you know, I hear a lot of people say, well, you should run and you shouldn't even get paid anything for doing your job. You should just be a public servant. And I think about myself. I'm a single person. I support myself. And I've got a really good job outside of this, so I'm lucky. But when I run out of vacation time at my job that pays my bills, if I weren't getting paid by the county and I was having to take off weeks at a time with no money, I couldn't do it. I can tell you right now. I know a lot of people that couldn't do it. And just like our state reps, they don't get paid anything but per diem. And I've thought before about running for that office. And I thought, how am I going to go up there and stay for three months without income? And per diem doesn't even cover what you make and what you spend in Santa Fe. I mean, when I was up there last time, I spent a hundred dollars a day on food for just myself. It's just, so, and then we've got like our sheriff, you know, the people that do this full-time, this is their income. This is their job. And I think that we've gotten so blinded by what goes on in Washington and the absolute corruption that goes on with people being in there for 40 years and they come out being millionaires. And I am so against that and how you handle that is term limits. People don't need to go up there. They need to go up there, do their damn job, come home, live under the laws that they made.
Yes.
And then we're done with it. And we don't have to worry about Joe Biden and people like that that have been up there and are multimillionaires now. and are multimillionaires now. But as far as local and county and state positions, when you're doing this for your living, I think we need to support our elected officials so that they can continue to help us have a better community. So, that's why I'm in favor of it. I know that, you know, it, I know people feel differently about it, but when I really think about it, just applying it just to myself, then this won't affect me, so I'm not voting myself a raise. But, but it does. It's, if you don't get some kind of compensation, the amount of hours that we put into this, I don't think anybody really going into this job, I had no idea how much time this was going to take. I mean, I literally have two full-time jobs right now. So, if you're not getting compensated for that, and you have to leave your other job as much as I do, and there's no compensation, there's a lot of people that couldn't do it. And so, then that limits you. Do you just want the wealthier people, or maybe people that own their businesses, are they the only one that can represent us, because they're the only ones that can afford it? I think we need a mixture of all of us. I think we need, you know, single women, we need ranchers, we need everybody, not just, you know, the wealthy. So, that's kind of my two cents worth, so, that's it.
I tend to agree with you almost 100% on all of that. It does take way more than what anybody realizes. And it, it's, you get a competitive wage for some of these full-time positions, you know, and maybe be a few more people interested in trying to do it, so...
I 100% agree with everything that was said, except for the fact that I don't want to commit the county, because we don't know what the future holds. And these are the bosses, and the bosses forfeit first. And I've lived by that all my life, and I just want to take this for reconsideration next budget year instead.
I, I feel strongly about voting on it now, and just being done with it, so that the people that are going to maybe think about putting their hat in the ring next year will know what they're getting into, you know, rather than saying, well, I might make this, or I might make this. So, I would rather vote on it today and just have it become part of our budget.
Agreed.
Okay, any more discussion? All righty. All right. Yeah, I'm going to. Okay, I make a motion for the approval of resolution number 5-11-23/111-56, establishing the salaries for incoming Otero County elected officials.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to number 21, request approval to send letter requesting 60-day extension of comment period on proposed BLM rule on conservation and landscape health.
We put this on, Bebo Lee called me the other day and was wanting me to try to see if the county would be interested in participating in this. I got with our attorney, RB, we had a phone conversation with Bebo, where he could explain all the details to it. The Cattle Grower Association, Otero Cow, Cattle Grower Association, we're already supporting this. It's just a deal to where we can get all the comments back and make sure it's exactly what it wants, needs to be. It's going to affect anybody that's running cattle on the conservation and stuff with BLM. RB did a little research on it, I'll let him say a little bit.
So, this is a proposed rule, that agencies are able to, to propose rules and enact rules allegedly to fulfill the legislative intent of Congress, but usually it's more about usurping power and doing the will of the agencies. And that's what this would be. It would be forest and BLM, public land is managed under a standard called multiple use, and the multiple uses that are identified are economic ones, and recre, it's recreation, ranching, mining, logging, those are essentially the uses, and it's for the economic benefit of the people and the local economies. And it, at the same time, if it's not managed correctly, then obviously those things would cease to function, so that's not how it's managed. It's, it's managed to keep these economic interests, including recreation, available for generations after generation. But what this proposed rule, one of the main aspects of it, is it would elevate conservation to a multiple, to one of the identified multiple uses, and would allow entities to get what would be a conservation permit for certain tracts of, of public land. And one of the concerns is that it could be used to get land that has traditionally been allocated for ranching, mining, logging, something like that, and prevent it from being used for one of those established multiple uses. And so, it, it's completely going against what the statutory intent is. But it, it's, there's a lot to the rule. It's 80-something pages, I believe, and we want to provide adequate, well-researched comments so that they are considered before this, this rule is actually passed. So, all we're doing today is, is asking for them to extend the comment period out 60 days to give all stakeholders the adequate time to consider this and provide input and alternatives. And, and so that's all this is doing. We will be submitting comments later. If this, we'll have them ready, one way or another, before the June meeting, because the deadline, I believe, is July, or June 20th. We're hoping for more time, but we'll have something ready to go at the next meeting, just in case this isn't approved or given consideration.
Well, I'm 1,000% in favor of this, and I want everybody to really start considering what's going on with our government. It's not just our ranchers. This affects everybody, and everybody needs to wake up to this, because when they label stuff conservation, it just takes it off, it takes it away from all of us. It's not public land anymore, it's federal land. And it removes you from recreating, camping, hiking, fishing, hunting, running cattle, just, I mean, pretty soon, you're not going to hardly be able to walk through our forest. If we don't start standing up to this, we're not going to have any left. We're not going to have any public lands left. And I read an article just this morning, it made me, my head spin, but that stupid John Kerry, he's an unelected bureaucrat, he has not been approved by the Senate, and he's talking about having climate change talks with China about doing away with, with the, like the carbon emissions from animals and stuff. I mean, that's the point we're at right now, is where they want to get rid of our cattle. You know, it's just beyond the pale of being stupid. But anyway, I just hope everybody will pay attention to this. It's, everybody thinks it's just the ranchers, but they're coming after you too. The ranchers are just there right now. So, everybody needs to start paying attention to this, and start writing letters to Congress, and writing letters to your senators, and let them know how you feel about this. But I definitely will sign this letter. I'll be happy to sign it.
And in addition to that, these declared wilderness and conservation areas, if a fire was to occur, it's natural, and they let the fire, and it happen until you get to where they declare their property line is, then you can start fighting it. That is absurd.
Then it's too damn late to fire it.
Then it's too late, and we're going to burn our mountain down with that theory. So, public comment is very necessary.
Bebo, would you like to say anything? Yeah, you do. Come on up. Gary, if you have any comment on this too?
Are you Matt Gary?
I am not yet.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate you all doing this. As you said, very well presented there. There has been a court case under Babbitt that ruled that they could not do that under the Obama administration, because that was part of the Taylor Grazing Act. We hadn't figured out how they're trying to usurp this, but as you made mention, it would directly affect the tax revenue of all these counties. The property tax would still be there, but you could not derive any income off of, off of the other land, so I think it would be a detrimental effect to the county. We don't have any oil and gas, we do have a little mining, there is a little bit of timber, I believe, on BLM, but it would need mainly the, the livestock use. And with the other things you were talking about with Mr. Carey, Secretary Carey, and the methane regulations that they're trying to impose on us, even though there's two sides of the science, that one says there, there is an effect, and another side that says there isn't, but they are trying to directly do away with the, I believe, with any kind of whatever you want to call it, extractive uses on the BLM and the Forest Service land, which, and eventually will go after the private property too.
Just thank you, Commission. And I also want to give you the thanks for being involved in the AOI meetings, and the, and the meetings with the Forest Service. I was at most of those too, and I appreciate that. What, what we did, you know, a lot of the industry is at stake by what happens right here on this, on this allotment. It happened to be the largest in the region, that's New Mexico and Arizona. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons why that everybody else is affected or impacted by what happens right here. I want to thank you. We, we, the Goff family survived. I don't know if you can call it a, an absolute win, because they're cut in half, but they survived thanks to, thanks to all of you guys. One statement that the, that the new acting supervisor made was that they didn't have the authority to regulate the state. And I think that's, I think that's something that they choose to interpret that way, because the, the actual act of Congress charged them with caring for that land. Whether it was, whether it's the state, or whether it's a private landowner, or whether it's a, a small allotment owner, they're charged by, by an act of Congress to care for that. That is not, what it is, is a forest reserve. And it's, you know, you can get into definitions, public lands and all of that, but what it is, it, it's a forest reserve set aside by Congress for the natural resources to be used by the people of this state and this county. The Forest Service is nothing but, they were charged to care for that, enhance it, make sure it's available. Now, what they've done is weaponize the ESA, because timber is one of those precious natural resources, it's no longer there. Grazing is on its, you can see what, what's happening with grazing, watershed. If, if they don't start taking care of that forest, we're, we're out of water. Everybody in this, everybody sitting in this room, it's, it's not just the rancher, and I appreciate you saying that, it's going to impact everybody in this, in this state and everybody in this county. But I do think that, that them saying that they don't have the authority to regulate whatever damages that, whatever, wherever it comes from, they're, they're absolutely wrong. I do believe there's, there's an MOU within the Mexico Department of Game and Fish. I, I don't know if it was renewed, but I know that it was there. But they have not only the authority, but they have the, the responsibility, as charged by an act of Congress, to care for those resources, whatever is damages them. And everybody in this room is, has a stake in that. It, it is resources for the public, resources for public use.
If we could get in there, clean out some of those trees, we'd increase our water table by a bunch.
Absolutely. And what you see, but by the, by the mismanagement of, of that forest, you can see wildfire. You can see the damage, and you can see the water, the, the water tables are dropping.
Well, that's what, what one of my main concerns is, is that they pretty much have free rein over all these last years, and our forest is in such bad shape, and yet they want more to mismanage? That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, you've got to really take care of stuff before you can ask for more. When you're not taking care of what you've already got, don't ask me for another acre. You know, that's how I feel about it.
Absolutely, and that, and that goes exactly into what we're asking for this 60-day, because they, they want more and more and more. And they, they choo, they decide, they choose when they have the authority and when they don't, and who they have the authority over. So, so I think it's very important, especially during this administration, that we do everything in our power to, you, you know, what, one analogy is, is, and I like to use, and I'll, I'll shut up, I shouldn't have, you know, gas prices. If they raise, if, if we're paying six bucks for gas, and they raise it to seven, we're outraged, but they drop it back to 6.50, and then we're happy. We have been trained.
That's right.
Amen.
We have been trained.
They did that with chocolate in Germany.
And that's what they're doing, even in the Goff situation.
Yeah.
They have 130 head. Historically, it was 1,300.
And they have the largest grazing allotment in the whole region, so if they can do that on that huge of an area, and say you're only allowed this many, that doesn't square with me.
Okay.
And I think we can use that FireWise program, where they're cleaning private properties of excess trees, and within 30 days, the water table comes up? That is proof that we can, I hope, force cleaning of the public land.
We, I, I think there, there's a way. We've got to find it.
Yep, yep.
There's something there.
I just throw darts.
We've got to find it.
Which one do we want to try today?
But thank, I want to, I do want to thank the Commission for, for being involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion for the approval to send a letter requesting a 60-day extension of comment period on proposed BLM rule on conservation and landscape health.
May I second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Did y'all all say aye too? Okay, so there you go.
Their hands were up.
Unanimous. Okay, number 22, requested the county commission select four votes for the candidates to the Center of Commerce Board of Directors. And I know that RB's put his name in the hat for that, and when you do this, when you vote, because I'm also a mission, a member of the Center of Commerce, you can either vote all four of your votes for one person, or you can divide them up and vote them however you want. So, I would like to recommend that the commission puts all of our four votes to RB, so that we have a voice on that, on that commission, but that's depending on how you guys feel about that too.
I agree too.
And I have already voted by membership.
Me too.
And the same, but I wondered, after I did that, is it a conflict of interest of any sort?
No.
I, I've looked, I've thought about that, and I, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't know how it could be.
I, I think you can argue that having someone from the county on it is in the county's interest, so I don't see anything.
And I'm amazed at what I learned at those meetings. I mean, it's got all the different businesses and stuff in town, and it's, it's a very, been a very learning experience for me, so... All right, I make a motion that the county commission select all four of our votes for RB Nichols, for our Center of Commerce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I will do my best.
That's what he does.
Okay, number 23, request approval to vacate North Spur Road. Okay, number 23, request approval to vacate North Spur Road.
Commissioners, we discussed this last meeting, and I informed you that there was additional information submitted and learned, and we tabled it so that that information could be provided to the viewers for consideration, and they can make their decision as required by statute. They did, after hearing that and considering it, we discussed it on Tuesday, and they determined to recommend vacation. With that recommendation, you can choose to vacate or not vacate, but before we get to that, two of the viewers are here, and they can provide you explanation of what they considered and why they have changed their recommendation, and then they can answer any questions you might have.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Parrot. I'm the Otero County Planning Commission Chairman, and we had a viewing of this property up in 16 Springs Canyon Road. It's a closed-off, one entrance into the subdivision. I don't know if you've seen maps of this or not.
Yeah, we've got them.
Okay. And initially, when we went out there on March 24th for the viewing, we also had Tom Porter and Matt Clark out there with us to evaluate whether this is such an important road that we can't give it up. Initially, now initially, we had to weigh all the factors that came into this, from the public standpoint for access for hunters, as well as the property owners. And initially, we viewed it as having such a narrow access for hunters would restrict them from being able to use it. However, when we heard the arguments from the property owners, it was, we were on the line, so to speak, and in the interest of preserving public access, we initially voted not to vacate it. However, the power of the people and the homeowners got together, and they decided that this was really a problem with people coming in there and trashing up the road. And there wasn't much parking space at all. It's rather narrow, and in one area, especially at the West Spur, it gets steep right there, so our road department's been out there quite a bit to keep on replenishing when people try and go up this thing with a motorhome, you know, they're digging in, and they've had to be taken out. So we debated this for almost an hour plus, and playing devil's advocate and everything else. However, the deciding factor was the property owners, homeowners that live around there, told us some of the stories that have happened. A person's dog was shot, and, you know, trash is left behind, including human waste, that they just feel they can just dump it right there. So in the interest of the property owners, we decided to take our vote back and vote in favor of closing it off. However, we also discussed with them what that would entail by putting up a fence, however, or a gate, excuse me, on North Spur, so that if there is a requirement for the Forest Service to get in there to fight a fire or anything else, they have a clear lane to get into it. And I believe they agreed to that, correct? So we have changed our vote, all three of us that went out there, from not blocking it off to blocking it off and vacating it. Now, as far as, I guess RB can talk more about, you know, what happens to that property after that, it's divided in half between the two property owners that have homes right along this street. That's out of my purview, but I can tell you that we did really debate this and weighing the public's right versus the property owners next to it and their rights. So we again have shifted our vote from not vacating it to vacating it. And that's about all I have. Do you have anything, Hans?
Hans Steinhoff, I've been on the Planning Commission for a few years, and one of my considerations was that people do not pay attention to signs. I have that problem with my driveway, private driveway signs, and people still come in there wanting to go through the forest. And number two, as Mark said, people leave trash. And number three, if you get in there with a trailer, you can't turn around, you can barely get a pickup turned around because it's a dead-end street with no turnaround. And I don't know what people would do unless they're really good at backing up with a trailer.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for allowing us this time. I did gather up more letters from support from our bore tree community, including Mr. Charles Walker. He's had problems back there with his grazing allotment, with people getting into his water system, even killing some of his cattle. So our total of 12 letters were submitted, a map was shown of the highlights of the other ones that were not highlighted. I cannot get a hold of them because they're not present all the time. So we really need the help to vacate this road, who has not been maintained in 43 years that I've been there. It's created a lot of problems, especially now. So we're pleading with you to help us vacate this road.
So I've got a couple of questions. Is there a fence on both corners of that property on both sides of the road?
Pardon me?
Is there fencing on both properties on?
The road is fenced off right now, on both sides with the two property owners.
Well, what I'm saying is also, what's the other, are you going to be able to put a gate up because, number one, you can't, the road's going to have to kind of stay there for, if you've got a Forest Service fire, and the allotment, the grazing allotment owner should have access to be able to get in if water lines or whatever.
Yes, sir. We would put a gate there to allow access for Mr. Walker, his personnel, Forest Service, volunteer fire department, anybody that needs to get in there, we would gate it and give them access.
Because who's going to be responsible for that gate?
The two adjacent properties would be mostly if they put a lock on it and provide a key to people that need access, such as Mr. Walker.
Because for a while, the hunters are going to come in there and cut that lock off that gate. So that's why I'm asking, who's responsible?
We would take full responsibility for maintaining that, yes, sir.
Questions? No? Okay.
Thank you for changing your mind.
Yeah, sounds like it needed to be, especially with all the letters we've got. You have any more?
No, I got that one.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your help.
Commissioners, before you vote, I just want to recognize Hans Steinhoff. He has been serving on the Planning Commission for how many years now, sir?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one now. So anyway, I just wanted to recognize him for that.
You need a raise.
Yeah. Double it. At our next budget meeting, we'll double it.
And by the way, we still have a vacancy, so if anybody is interested in, that owns property and joining us, we meet usually once a month for an hour here in this building, so if you still would like to join, we have one vacancy for anybody that would like to be part of the Commission. So give it to Silvio over there if you're interested. She'll let you see the details.
Thank you.
Can you just let me know when your meeting next, so I can just sit in there and listen?
Okay.
Thank you.
It's usually the same Tuesday as the Commission meeting, so second Tuesday very well.
Second Tuesday, 1:00 upstairs, usually, unless we're booted out and sent over to the federal building.
Second Tuesday, 1:00.
All right. I make a motion for the approval to vacate North Spur Road.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second Tuesday.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Second, where's my?
Okay, number 24 is the presentation by Wilson and Company on the Angelina Boulevard and Steve Drive and select options for track control.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Eric Hamilton with Wilson and Company, good morning.
Good morning.
I also have with me Lorenzo Correjo. We are both engineers for Wilson and Company, and we are currently serving as your on-call engineering firm. And this morning, we're going to go through the engineering findings of a study of intersection in the unincorporated area of Chaparral, Angelina Boulevard, and Steve Drive. We prepared a presentation, and we welcome questions throughout this presentation. Lorenzo's going to go ahead and start the presentation. Thank you.
So today, we'll be presenting the results of the intersection study that we conducted at Steve Drive and Angelina Boulevard. Next slide, please. Yes, well, we already presented ourselves. My name's Lorenzo Cornejo, I'm an engineer and intern. Eric Hamilton is being, the next slide, please. So this is a view of the study area that we did the analysis. This is the intersection of Steve Drive and Angelina Boulevard. As you can see on the picture, Steve Drive is the road that runs east and west that has the stop signs. So currently, the intersection is a two-way stop. The posted speed limit on Angelina Boulevard is 40 miles per hour, and the roadway classification for both roads is local roadway. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the study was to evaluate the intersection to determine any improvements needed for operation and safety. Okay. Next slide, please. We'll be presenting the existing conditions, which is how the intersection is currently behaving or operating. The next slide, please. We conducted two count data, which is, I don't know, maybe most of you are already familiar with placing the road tubes. It's a black tube that we place on the roads, and those tubes help us collect the information regarding the volume and the speed. We installed them at south of Steve Drive for a period of 48 hours, and the ADT, which is the average daily traffic around Angelina Boulevard, is 2,200 vehicles. The posted speed limit, as mentioned, is 40 miles per hour, but the 85 percentile speed of people driving are exceeding over the peak speed. As you can see on the southbound, people are driving 47 miles per hour, and for the northbound, it's only 43 miles per hour. Next slide, please. So the Highway Capacity Manual provides guidelines for us to determine the operational traffic operation of a signalized or unsignalized intersections. So you can think this of a grading scale in school. So if the level of service is an A, it means that the intersection is performing well. If the level of service is a letter E or F, it just means that it's failing, that the delay on the vehicles and the queue it's extending, so it provides more hazard for the drivers. So the next slide, please. The New Mexico DOT provides guidelines on what would be the minimum acceptable level of service standards for certain roadways. For this case, would be a level of service D. And as you can see on the table, the intersection is performing as a level of service B, which is really good. The next slide, please. For the safety analysis, we conducted a study of the crash data. We requested the latest five years of crashes along that intersection. There were only a total of two crashes reported, one in 2019, one in 2020. All the crashes occurred in clear weather conditions, in daylight conditions, and so we weren't able to find any, determine any patterns on the crashes. The next slide, please. We also, we were also provided with lock, call locks from 2020 to 2022. A total of 62 call locks we received. From those, 60 were related to the traffic stop, and two were related to a crash injury. So we'll be presenting the analysis alternatives. Thank you. The MUTC is a manual that we follow, that it also provides guidelines for us in order to determine if a multi-way stop warrants for that intersection, meaning that it would be changed from a two-way stop to an always stop. The minimum volume criteria for a major street is at least 300 vehicles per hour for any eight hours consecutive. The minimum street has to have at least 200 units, which is combining vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, and bicyclist traffic per hour also for the same eight hours, and the minimum of five crashes within a 12-month period. So based on these results, the intersection does not meet the minimum criteria. So the next slide. This table provides the turning movement counts that we collected. We collected turning movement counts at the intersection for a period of 12 hours. We installed a camera, and then these are the results. I know it might be hard to see, but the AM peak was at 7:00 AM with about 267 vehicles crossing the intersection, both combining the eastbound, westbound, and northbound, southbound movements. And for the PM peak was at 5:00 PM, which collected a total of 280 vehicles. Next slide, please. We'll be presenting some of the disadvantages of installing a multi-way stop at intersections that are not warranted, meaning that it did not trigger the need for a multi-way stop or an always stop. Drivers tend to disobey the traffic signal. I guess familiarity of drivers driving through that area already know that, you know, one of the intersection, or one of those streets does not have a stop sign, and then all of a sudden, the stop sign is placed there, and they might, you know, disobey it and overpass. They might use an alternative inadequate route for them to save time on the travel. It provides unnecessary delay to drivers, and this does not help lower the speed on the roadway. Okay. Another alternative that we took into consideration was using the Federal Highway Administration. In 2008, they started an initiative of collecting data from case studies around the nation that are proven to, you know, increase safety and operation benefit. The table, I mean, the initiative provides a list of countermeasures. This list has been updated in 2012 and 2017. So one of the list items they have is called multiple low-cost countermeasures of stop-controlled intersections. The benefit are, some of the countermeasures they have is double up the oversized advanced intersection warning signs, double up and oversized advanced the stop sign ahead, double up oversized stop signs, and properly placed stop bar at the intersection. The next slide, please. Another alternative that we took into consideration also is the radar speed signs. The radar speed signs, it's an interactive sign that displays the vehicle speed as the driver is approaching, as you can see on the image. So some of the benefits that it alerts the drivers if they're driving over the supposed the posted speed limit. Drivers tend to slow down because of this sign. It's affordable because it's solar or meter powered. Some of the cons are effectiveness may reduce over time. Drivers may not necessarily be more aware of after time passes. It might be subject to vandalism, so somebody might change the supposed speed limit, and then no enforcement, so. And then another alternative that we propose is police enforcement, okay? So some of the benefits, we've seen is that drivers tend to lower the speed if an enforcement is there. The only con is that it's temporary, and it is only effective when a police officer is present. Thank you. So our recommendations would be to double up the oversized advanced intersection warning sign on the major road, which would be Angelina Boulevard. Double up oversized advanced step-ahead intersection warning signs, and double up oversized stop signs, and those are the ones that we presented on the bottom, so if you're familiar with the signs. Another recommendation is to provide reflective sheeting on signposts, and those could be also added to the intersection ahead and the other signs that we proposed on the previous slide, so that drivers can see them when they're driving. to be aware of if there's a pedestrian crosswalk, or if there's a stop bar, where to make the appropriate stop. And then police enforcement. And lastly, a permanent speed radar sign. And now the room's open for any questions, comments?
The, on the stop bars, Tom, you had problems with that paint on there, with it not sticking...
Just because of the chip seal.
Yes.
And the new paint they're using, it doesn't adhere well to the chip seal.
Reflective paint?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, where we're doing road lining right now, the two companies we have that do our striving for it to be semi-permanent, they're having to come in about every three years and re-strike.
That's not true. What, what you got to understand on this situation is, when you get on Angelina off of 54, there's not a stop sign or a slowdown all the way until you hit State Line Road, which traffic runs very fast on that. When this was all starting, Sheriff Black and I both talked, yeah, writing more tickets is one thing, but trying to figure out a way to slow that traffic down somehow. You didn't recommend like a four-way stop. Is that out of the question, or you think that would cause more damage? I know it would for a while.
Yes.
Everybody running the stop sign.
Yes.
What about those speed bumps? Those are slowing down.
Well, it's, yeah, they're, they're not recommended on where emergency vehicle routes are. It would slow down, yeah, ambulances and fire trucks.
You're glaring at me.
No, I'm not glaring at you. The county has always been opposed to speed bumps.
Yes. Any speak questions?
Madam Chair, if I may address Commissioner Matherley's question on why we're not recommending the four-way or the all-way, and it just simply doesn't meet the engineering criteria. Those four components that Lorenzo described, and we went through all of those thresholds, and we're below that threshold. So from an engineering standpoint, that's why we're recommending not to pursue an all, an all-way or four-way stop, sir.
Okay. So I have no problem with doing, and we can do the oversized stop signs and the reflective taping on the, on the pipe and stuff. And I'm sure Sheriff Black's deputies can open them books up, start writing some tickets. So that's probably basically about all that we're really going to be able to do. I, I think if we put a speed limit sign on there, it won't last very long. It'll either be broke, or it'll disappear. We've talked about doing the flashing stop signs down there, and pretty much figured that they would disappear real quick, too. So I guess, there really hadn't been any accidents until, what was it, last, last year, wasn't it, when the two fatalities that...
The two.
Yeah, hit back-to-back. So that's kind of what brought this situation up. They were one day after each other, and they, the one was, the people were looking at what they were doing at, on the other one, you know, so that's, so yeah, whatever recommendations, I mean, we can take care of the stop signage. I don't, I don't know if we, if there's any other precautionary signs we can put on Angelina. I'm just trying to...
Well, and one of the suggestions they had was actually a four-way intersection sign. We can actually do that, you know, northbound, southbound, easy enough. Unfortunately, it's not an isolated spot. We're having issues throughout the county, insurance throughout the country, you know, distracted driving.
Right. Okay. You don't have any?
No.
No.
Maybe just get the bigger signs in there.
And that, that's just one. That's a pretty heavy. Tom, is there any of the other ones that maybe we, we need to...
We have a couple of Angelina and State Line, but, you know, again, they're not distracted driving, you know, you're coming in straight and not realizing that there's, you know, a T-intersection there, and they're just blowing straight through it, ending up on the Texas line, so.
Well, we did, we probably, if we can, address a few of those heavy street down there with maybe a bigger stop sign. Of course, as hard as the wind blows...
And give David some of the ones he knows are the issue.
Just no more roundabouts. That roundabout down there is a pain, when you are about 102 feet long. [laughing] We take the shortcut through Chaparral to get to Anthony. So through the gap, through the gap is, no, it's not. It's that roundy-round. That's...
I haven't been on there.
I have, but it's on, it's on the inside.
Yeah. They know.
[laughing] Is there a little bit of a bad news?
I think we can, we, RB, we can just do this, offer suggestions to Tom to increase the stop signs, or... Because it's, it's just there in select options for traffic control. And we do all of our own stop signs and all that.
We do all of our own, yeah. Oh, yeah, that, it, it says in select options, do you want to direct them now, or just direct Tom to do what we've suggested, based on the study?
I would like to direct him to take the situation and, and start making attempts on it. Try this oversized signage with the reflective tape on the poles. You may have to put a warning sign down at the end of Angelina where State Line is, intersection ahead, or something.
Well, if you tell me, NMSU has laid out how many feet more than intersections.
Yeah. But we can take care of some of that, so.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I would do a vote. Make a motion to enact traffic safety measures based on the study, and I'd keep it general like that.
Okay. I make a motion to enact safety, safety measures.
Recommended by the study.
Recommended by the study.
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now that the commissioners report, Commissioner Matherley?
Well, I've been gone quite a bit this month, so not nearly as busy as it was last month. I have a little situation in Chaparral going with some people down there, and one of the representatives. I'll take care of that at the next Chaparral meeting. It'd be nice if, David, if you can make that one in case, in case I got another set of ears.
In case.
I've, I've already talked with Sheriff Black and Matt on some of the issues in Bolvakers. Trying to get, that, that's just an ongoing battle. That's an everyday battle in Otero County is the trash and situations like that. And that, that's really about it. I'm, tomorrow night, I'm going to a, like, NMSU graduation.
Oh, me, too.
Are you?
Yep. Will you do notice a possible quorum? Thank you.
So that, that'll be exciting to see what that's going on up there, so. And that, that's about it.
Mr.?
I have no idea what I'm doing.
I believe 6:00.
I was appointed to the broadband planning and interview committee for the state of New Mexico, which I'm very excited about. By next month's meeting, I should be able to present a plan for forming a committee, a planning committee for broadband development just in Otero County, using our stakeholders and citizens and all of that, which is very much needed in the mapping, and we need the schools involved, and so I'm excited about that. That's kind of my baby project right now. I've been accepted to a Leadership Institute. It's, it's by, it's a Dave Ramsey program for leadership in Nashville. So I'll be going to that in a couple of weeks and hope bring back some important information, and I think especially for, like, our 100% community and all that. I think, I see the most asset to, I think that's, I don't do so much. I don't know what I do.
[laughing] Okay. Is that it? Okay. Because I've got some stuff on here that you did that you forgot, and I did with you. Okay. Since the last meeting, I attended the Rotary Club's 100th anniversary, and I read that proclamation that the county did for them, and that was a really nice, nice evening. And I attended the fire day at the event at Earl Flats with you.
I thought we already talked about that.
I don't think so. No, because we didn't do it last time, because we ran out of time.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we did that, too.
And then I also attended the broadband summit with you, held out at the fairgrounds. So, see, I'm helping out, sister.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I attended a Forest Service meeting with the Gosses, Representative Vincent, Senator Greggs, and Erica Lennon that was here today with the Forest Service, and we're still really trying to fight for the Gosses. I picked up trash on the bypass on the community cleanup day, and man, that was something else. I can't believe what people throw out of their cars. But I did find a Bandito keychain, the Bandito motorcycle. I have it. Pretty cool. So anyway, I got the prize for finding the most unique trash.
What do they, what do they call the Bandito girls?
Uh, I don't know.
[laughing] I'm gonna think of it. Wait.
Chica.
Nope.
Okay. And then I attended a meeting for the Otero County Day at the state legislature. We're, we're starting to make our plans for that. Attended another Forest Service meeting with the Gosses, and then I also attended the soil and water conservation meeting, and we were talking about the three dams that we have up in the, in the mountains that we really got to keep an eye on. And I attended New Mexico Association of Counties State Board meeting in Angel Fire, and I attended the National Association of Counties Energy, Environment, and Land Use meeting yesterday. And then I attended the open house last night at the Cloudcroft Senior Citizen Center, and that was really nice. I mean, they've got a nice community center up there. It was very nice. I was glad I got to go to that. And I wanted to tell all of you guys, if you have not seen The Lion King at the Flick, you need to go see it. Those kids are amazing. It's probably one of the best things I've seen at the Flickinger Center. The costuming, the kids, the music, it's so good. And then I want to tell everybody Happy Mother's Day, because that's the Sunday. Happy Mother's Day to you guys, too. That's it. That's what I got.
I got one more thing. Congratulations to Vicki, who has voted to be our chair, to represent us with the Association of Counties as well.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Awesome. Okay. Now Pamela's not here. Did she give you anything, Sylvia, to say?
She did not.
Okay, all right. RB, I know you've been busy.
Done a few things. I had a meeting with the New Mexico DOT Region 2. If you recall, back in November, December, we submitted a request to get several sections of roadway around Cloudcroft approved for OHV use, side-by-sides. They said it was the biggest request they had received to date, and because of that, it took them several months to work through it. Part of that was analyzing the speed limits and the crash and accident data, and as well as, I guess it would be like dangerous roadway situations, such as tight curves or no guard rails. But, long story short, unfortunately, their assessment and recommendation now is not to approve any of the requested sections, primarily based on crash data and lack of guard rails in sections. One section was because it was a 50, there was like a mile that was, of it that was 55, and it can't be over 45 miles per hour. And another aspect, they didn't see, part of their criteria is connectivity of trails and, and networks and support of tourism. For some reason, they didn't see that connectivity. We are going to have a follow-up meeting. They didn't have their formalized report yet, so I wanted to get that, so we could review it and prepare a response, and then set up a time so that not just I can meet with them, but you could, too. And part of what I've discussed with the sheriff is, is getting more detailed mapping for them that shows how the request works with the trail network that's outside of Cloudcroft, and making a better case for how it supports tourism, and what it does for recreationalists and hunters and all of that. So I'm still waiting for the formal report. Hopefully, they'll have that. Another issue is they don't currently have a commissioner, and anything that would get approved cannot get approved until they have a commissioner appointed. So I don't know what the timeline is on that. Had a couple meetings on the Laloos Gate Road project. That grant is due in June, and so we're working on getting that put together. The key element of it was getting a command endorsement from the Commander of Holoman Air Force Base. Last year, what we got didn't meet the mark. We didn't have good dialogue and early open communication, but we took care of that year, this year, and have been talking to them since November. And what resulted from that was a very good letter for us that puts us in a strong position to get that grant. So much better position than last year. There's also some movement with Senator Luhon's office will be putting part of all, or all of that project in for some federal congressional funding. So hopefully, something good comes out of that. As you stated, I attended Forest Service meetings to discuss the grazing allotment, the Sacramento Canyon grazing allotment. We made some progress. We got, we didn't get the worst-case results, and the, the positive is that the Sacramento Grazing Association did not have to sell any of the cattle they currently had. They weren't able to add additional cattle, but that's one benefit, is not having to sell and be able to keep what they did have. And I just hope they're able to make that work financially, and hopefully, we'll keep pushing on this and be able to get some common sense approach out of it. Other meetings that I attended were with the courthouse committee, working on the plans for the new courthouse. Currently, we're still narrowing down the exact site location. We have some very rough sketch designs, and we met yesterday, actually, and narrowed down that a bit, and so they're going to go tweak those and come back with hopefully what we can use as the final. And, and once we have that narrowed down, we'll need to get an appraisal and official survey done, and then submit a package to the State Board of Finance to approve the land transfer. So unfortunately, some slower-moving red tape, but we are, if nothing else, crawling forward, and the court is pleased with what's coming out of it. So that's, that's positive. But it's mostly what I have to report.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. And it's not even noon.